Good evening. It is Monday, October 9th, 2023 at 6:00 PM in the Susan Telly Livesley Boardroom of the 1887 Building. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Andre, here. Mr. Gayhart?
Here.
Mr. Gatten?
Here.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Here.
Mrs. Reckles?
Here.
Mr. Scarrow?
Here.
We'll note Mr. Barkus' excuse. And Mr. Forster?
Here.
We do have a quorum. Tonight's meeting was noticed for state statute. And just before we move into the community participation portion, I would like to, in honor of Mr. Wolf, just take a moment of silence to remember his legacy at Elkhorn School, Mr. Wolf. Thank you. The community participation is pursuant to Board Policy 187. Residents of the area, Elkhorn Area School District, families of district students and employees wishing to address the board may do so in person. Do we have anybody who wanted to speak tonight? Seeing them, then dispense with reading the rest of that. We'll start out with our Options Charter School student presentation.
Good evening. I am Mindy Vinnie. I'm a teacher on record at Options. Jane Gerhalsky, I'm also a teacher on record for Options, teach them.
Mark Beileman, high school science teacher at Options.
I really like that cover slide.
So we wanted to talk a little bit about Project Lead the Way at Options and how we do it. So Options students, we have students that attend blended learning on Tuesdays only. That would be our 4K through 5th grade. They get Project Lead the Way once a week. Our Academy students that are K through 6, they come Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday in person. And those students get Project Lead the Way three days a week. And then on Thursdays, we have 612 students who attend blended learning. And that's our, obviously, the older side of it, but they come on Thursdays and get their Project Lead the Way. And then we have 9th through 12th grade Project Lead the Way electives. And this, we have an engineering and cybersecurity group. So we teach them through a variety of methods. We use our Project Lead the Way modules. We participate in the Minemaker Fair. We have STEM challenges. And right now, we were lucky enough to get a wonderful grant from Project Lead the Way, so we are working on a future fab lab in the Options School. So we have, I think, $100,000 or so. So we're going to get a whole bunch of new equipments to use, to create with, so.
Is that, that's in addition to the one from last year?
All of it together.
All of it.
Yep. And it will, the grant will, well, we will use the grant for 5K all the way up through 12th grade. So it will reach all of the students at Options. STEM education and Project Lead the Way is wonderful for life skills. STEM education introduces those students to real-world concepts that are necessary to compete for the careers in the future. So your robotics, your programming, we do design and modeling, engineering, cybersecurity, all of those things will help them in the future for whatever careers they choose to pursue. And it also offers plenty of opportunities to practice those social and life skills necessarily, necessary to thrive as future teenagers and adults. So a lot of that group work, a lot of that collaboration and working together. Students work in groups, and the goal is to solve real-world problems. We don't do just random projects. They're designing, they're creating, and test, you know, testing their models. Put, one example is a foot orthotic. Get into the apps and more. The excitement of working through hands-on activities provides ample opportunities for the students to work on the life skill of following directions. That is huge, following directions. Project Lead the Way activities and STEM challenges provide life skill opportunities by working in team-oriented formats, communication, problem-solving skills, perseverance, and many other experiences. STEM activities allow students to understand the meaning of persistence and working through trial and error. This particular challenge was, they had to design a prototype that could self-water a plant for two weeks. Only one, one first model worked. So they had to go through, okay, we didn't, didn't work the first time, and everybody handled it really well, did a little more research, and then they all figured it out second time. So it's just a great experience for, for kids. Students keep their minds and imaginations open to all the career possibilities STEM education has to offer. So this was a picture in my classroom. I'm all over my classroom. There's visuals of potential careers and, and opportunities that, you know, if there's something you're learning in my classroom, there's a career for it. So. Our students love and look forward to STEM class. So here's a few pictures of, of our kids with their final projects.
So just to know, I was supposed to take those last two slides? It's okay.
So I, I just, a little bit to say, you know, you heard words like life skills and careers, and I can't emphasize it enough that these students are being exposed to these types of careers, skills. They're going to find out what they like to do and also what they don't like to do. And I, I really think that's important, and they're having fun learning and having these opportunities for these, for these kiddos is one of the core. So, thank you.
I mean, the, the cybersecurity piece in that program, we were one of the pilot school districts that pilot and worked with that Project Lead the Way and NSA. So having that opportunity, I noticed we had an early graduation request coming from an Options student who was going into cybersecurity. So I think that's great that that's been added. And so the, the board and the community knows we start our biomedical science, computer science, and the engineering and four-year-old kindergarten, and all kids have that up through eighth grade, and then they can choose their courses and pathways beyond that. So that's great. I would guess Project Lead the Way would be really interested in seeing you guys perhaps present too and share how you make that work and integrate it into a virtual school, hybrid school setting, because I, I don't think there's very many of them that do offer Project Lead the Way in that setting.
Right. Right. Yeah, when we only see, you know, like, blood, we see them once a week. So it's, yeah, you do have to get a little creative to, to get the module through and have it be effective when you only see them once a week. So. But they love it.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for any of them?
I saw a beautiful little redhead in there. Near and dear to my heart in there. Oh, not a real question, just, I mean, you guys are doing great. I love the fact that we're, that, that our school district is so focused on STEM and, and trying to get those types of skills, talk to our kids so, so young, that way they grow up with these skills rather than trying to learn them at 18. I couldn't do it. I mean, they're, they're way above me in terms of those types of skills and stuff. So keep doing what you guys are doing.
Thank you. Yeah, I love it.
Thank you. Thanks. Thank you first time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have the approval of the school board minutes. We had no close-up that week, so it's just a regular school board minutes.
I'm going to approve the minutes of this September 25th, 2023, where the session school board meeting has presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the September 25th, 2023, regular session school board meeting. Can we do this as a voice vote, or do we have to? Okay, all right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed? All right, motion passes. General and other fund bills.
The general and other fund bills this evening covers checks number 150294 through 150442, wire transfer 029 through 309, and ACH 170 through 213, in the combined amount of $1,508,617.25. And you'll notice in there are semi-annual debt service payment was included in there. That's just for our interest payment, pay interest twice a year, principal once a year, just in April. And then following the bill listing, and I think it was a separate MO with some additional information of the bills in your package.
Are there any questions for Mr. Chuon?
Bill, we've talked about this before, but I can't for the life of me remember. The Apple stuff, we use Chromebooks here, but the Apple iPads that we use are for a very specific thing. Am I correct?
Yeah, usually at that very young level, kindergarten through maybe second grade is for those, so.
Because it's app-based and.
Right.
Yeah, we don't use them like one-to-one, but they use them for additional modules or tools, sometimes communication tools.
Right.
Checks over.
Okay. The Aurora preplacement test, I'm assuming that's somebody who is taking college courses and we're, we're helping out with that? I mean, is that?
No, that would be for the onboarding. So Aurora would be for the physicals.
Oh, gotcha. Okay. That's part of our onboarding process. Okay. Who knows all I have?
Anything else?
I just have one question, and this is more procedural, not necessarily about the actual bill. During school services, large chunk of change, that we're running on. How often do we send that out for bid, and when is it due to go out for bid? And is that all year that we're paying for upfront, or is that only half a year?
That would be for a month. Yes, that's like one to nine.
Yeah. All right.
And we have three years left from the contract, including this one?
Yes.
Yeah, it's something that we contract for, and we're trying to get either a three-year or five-year contract. Generally, they won't do more than three. Right? Is that correct?
We did it five.
Oh, we did it five last time? Okay, I could remember what it was.
Usually it's almost the opposite. If a contractor's going to bid, they want a five-year contract.
Okay.
Right. For the commitment, I think, with the infrastructure.
And we're on a three-year currently, is it?
No, we're in a five-year.
We're in a five.
Yeah, we're in a five-year, so.
And we have three years left.
Three years left, okay.
And we have bid that out two years ago.
Yeah, yeah. Because I remember being part of that.
I was gonna say, I'm sure it happened out. I just haven't seen it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? If none, then looking for a motion.
I move to approve the general and other fund bills of October 9th, 2023, check numbers 150294 to 150442. Wire number 029 to 309, and ACH, the numbers 170 to 213, in the combined amount of $1,508,617.25, as presented.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the general and other fund bills of October 9th, 2023, check numbers 150294 to 150442. Wire number 029 to 309, and ACH numbers 170 to 213, in the combined amount of $1,508,617.25, as presented. Roll call, both, please.
Mr. Andre?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mr. Gatten?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mrs. Reckles?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Mr. Forster?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to the health insurance proposal.
Taylor, Rick, who will join us? And then online, we also have Al Gager from USI, who's one of our consultants, that's worth a little sign going through it. So I don't know, Taylor, if you were going to present, or if Al was going to present.
Al can certainly. I'm more happy to speak to it as well if we want to go through the whole, whole presentation here.
I don't know if we need to go through the whole presentation. We just want to go through the recommendations.
Yeah, I think just the recap of where we landed.
Yeah.
And I mean, it's a great story.
It was, yeah, and it was pretty well laid out in the presentation, I felt like. It provided a lot of information.
So do we want to go to the what's changing? Or?
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay. I think that covers, this slide right here.
Yeah.
Covers the bulk of it, but go ahead, Taylor.
So to, to just make sure we're all on the same baseline here, Humana is exiting the employer health insurance offering. And so they are no longer for us or any other employer as of January. And so in partnership with USI, we have now come to the opportunity to look at and potentially move to a self-funded, self-funded health plan from fully insured. So ultimately, our proposal, our recommendation is to move to this Lucent Abstruxi, this whole partnership as we look at self-funded, move to this kind of plan. And so ultimately, two sides here. We have kind of the internal employer side, and we have our employee-facing side. Our employees are not going to see a premium change, and they're not going to see a plan change, not a network change. There's only a process change. And so we can talk through some of those details, but ultimately, we're very proud to be able to bring forward a solution for our staff that doesn't come with significant cost increases. Internally, though, behind the scenes, there are significant changes. We're ready for them. Ultimately, in a nutshell, instead of having that fully insured health plan help cover those expensive expenses, handle the process, more than incurring all those costs. And so internally, working with the business office and accounting team, we're working through those processes of what does that look like? Because the district is not responsible to pay those claims. And so managing that month to month. Ultimately, it's a great opportunity for our staff. Great opportunity internally for, for, for the plan management. And it's, it's the right time. If we don't do something now, we don't make a radical change now, it's the future health insurance is a little terrifying.
Yeah.
So we're, we're confident in bringing this recommendation forward now.
Our traditional healthcare bits that we resee back, I believe the lowest one was approximately 40, was it around a 40% increase?
Yep.
On our premiums paid, or, or it was switched to the Mercy Care system.
Right.
And that's the only end network which would have been a disruption of 70% of our staff that don't use Mercy.
The number of fully insured carriers out there has diminished greatly.
Yeah.
You know, Taylor mentioned Humana, WA, the year before, so there's school districts that are just a competition. Just kind of what we used to do is almost bid out the insurance every other year.
Right.
So.
Right.
Were there any questions from the board on this? This is the, the recommendation. I think it's going to keep, again, it's a different process on how we go forward and move forward with it, but staff can still go to any medical provider. It'll just impact the processing of the bills and how that is done. I've got a few questions for them.
How did, how does the staff, I mean, has this been presented to staff, I'm assuming?
No.
It is not?
Well, it's been presented to the insurance committee, which has staff members on it.
On it, okay. So staff was involved in helping make this decision. You were on that committee too, then?
Yes.
The, so in terms of, so say, so, so, okay. I watched the video. It was very, it was very helpful. However, there were questions that I was left with, like, for example, who, does everybody get to just kind of decide like what they're, what they're, what they're needing, and they just, we just pay for it at that point? Or, like, obviously, a doctor would be involved in that care, but, but in a traditional sense with insurance, the doctor requests something to be done, an individual goes to the insurance, the insurance approves or denies it, goes back to the doctor, they argue for a little while on whether or not they're going to approve it or not, and finally, it either gets the final approval or disapproval. Is that something that's now on us to decide?
No, so we will still have our plan documents stating what's covered, what's not covered, what, how many times can you go to a chiropractor, for example? That plan document that we have with Humana right now, our plan is just to mirror it over and use it with whoever our next Lucent is, for an example. So they would be our next, they're the plan administrator.
Correct, okay. So Lucent is?
Employees won't see a change from that aspect in terms of, if they've continued to have approved in-service and approved care, that's not going to change. We're still using that plan document as our guiding force, as what's covered and what's not covered.
So what happens, yes, it does. What happens if we disagree with that? What I mean by that is, so say, for example, I walk in, I'm the employer of the, the school district, I need a heart transplant, I'm having serious issues, but who, what's the, Lucent says, hey, look, it's just too much of a risk right now. But we're, we look at it as we know this teacher, we know this person, we, we want to be able to help this person out. I mean, is there any discretion there, or is it whatever Lucent, we, we, we roughly?
Al, can you speak to best practice about what's recommended for school boards and school districts?
Sure.
Sure.
Lucent has claim processors and decisions on pre-certification the same as the fully insured carriers. So ultimately, they will act off of the plan document to make that decision. The question of, does the district, because we're self-funded, does the district have discretion? The main discretion I would suggest would be if we want to change the plan language, we have much more latitude to change it. But I would also say if we were to try to change language, we would, the, the main concern with that is the stop-loss carrier, which, you know, while we are self-funded by the terms of this discussion, we are up to a limit, and then stop-loss kicks in. If we mess around with the language and all of a sudden, the stop-loss carrier says, nah, I, we don't agree with that, now we're on the hook. So I would discourage us from making any element of habit of changing how, you know, how it's, the language would be based on, you know, that's part of the year-by-year review. And to Taylor's point, the way we set it up was to mirror what is covered, like, and how it's covered, like, before. So that we don't find ourselves in that position of playing insurance decision-maker.
Okay. Yeah, I think for those listening around the room, self-funded is kind of a misnomer in the sense that we're still purchasing a insurance policy that will cover claims once they reach $150,000 a year. So it's like a super-high deductible insurance, and the district covers everything under $150,000. So those type procedures would obviously be great. Be in that insured group. Yeah, okay. And then AMPs is the, AMPs is the pharmaceutical, correct?
No, they, they are the negotiator behind the.
Pricing, okay. Yep. And Drexie is the pharmaceutical. So they're not a part of the Aurora network. If the employee, say they're a, you're there in the health or a different, they'll go through AMPs. There's an app. When they get the bill, they'll get sent to AMPs, and AMPs will negotiate with that medical provider the price. And pay. And then let the district know, here's how much you need to pay that medical provider. Okay.
I saw something in there, how is it Lucent that does the kind of looks, reviews bills and helps find areas where things, there's errors and things like that? Is that Lucent's role? Yes. Okay.
Lucent and AMPs also will review those, correct, Al?
I didn't hear your question.
The, the question was, the, the bill reviewing, is that done by Lucy and, or Lucent and AMPs?
Yep, so Lucent is the concierge that you had read about in terms of helping make sure, you know, if there's any miss appropriate billings, et cetera. What AMPs is really there for is, and Jason, you had hit, hit upon it, when an individual is going to a non-contracted provider, Lucent will process the claim, and if in the end, the provider doesn't agree to the amount of the reimbursement, and they try to balance bill the staff member the extra amount, that's where AMP steps in and negotiates on the member's behalf.
Okay.
And I, I think in the presentation, what surprised me is 90% of medical bills have errors in there.
Yes.
And so Lucent, that's part of what they do, is just eliminating, there was a substantial savings, I think, up to 6%, just by scrutinizing bills closer.
Yeah, that's terrifying.
Do we have a broad strokes of the amount of money that we're saving, using it this way, using this versus getting it out?
There's a projection, I believe it was anywhere from a, if you remember that range, a negative 6% to up, worst-case scenario, a 10% increase.
But certainly better than the 37% or 40% we were looking at.
But the proposals we have are bid vendors, you know, both sell, sell, whether they have fully insured, so. And I got to give the folks at USI, and not to say that because Al's on the phone, but everyone there really has worked, I think, very hard on behalf of the district. We've had multiple meetings, and then last Wednesday was kind of the summary piece in terms of putting together the recommendation. The piece also, Taylor mentioned, I mean, there will be some additional demands on our office, business office. You think of it now, with the health insurance, we get a bill each month, we just pay it.
Right.
You know, this is going to be more of a cash flow monitoring piece in terms of, you know, as claims come through, be a draw on that, and then we'll just have to monitor the cash. In a sense, we're doing that right now with our dental plan, because that's self-funded.
Okay.
But dental's a whole different. So that'll be the change. And so as time goes on, you know, we may need some additional help in terms of that piece, but still, when you look at the overall cost of health insurance, it's still a better deal for the district, I think, for our employees.
Yeah.
And Bill, if you don't mind me weighing in.
Yeah.
A couple of years back, when we did the initial strategic planning, one of the key things that is in place, up and running, and appreciated by staff is the nice clinic and utilized by the staff. And it would be, we'd be hard-pressed had we just introduced it now when we're first starting to self-fund to make that effective. We learned that in, we, over the years, that it takes time to get that off and running, and now we're going to have full benefit of that, because you know, every dollar that goes toward that clinic is not a dollar we're paying out of our, you know, our coffers towards self-funding, and we're at a pretty good clip right now.
Any other questions?
Do you want to describe where we landed between alternative two and alternative three, why we did? Also, Bill?
Can you go?
Slide six.
Thank you. I was going to try and take a guess.
This one?
Yep.
So I'll turn, so Al, I hope you heard that question, and you might be able to speak for this little corner, only because USI was again, so Bill's point is phenomenal and presenting and diving into the deep dive. But Al, the question is the difference between alternative two and alternative three.
And I'm looking at slide six, and it's the advantages and disadvantages of fully insured versus self-funded.
All right, it has the number in the bottom right.
So slide.
Shared with the screen. Let me, let me share. Sorry about that. I should have been sharing.
So in large part, when we're looking at the different options, one, two, and three versus their current fully insured, UMR is a TPA that is owned by United Healthcare. And in large part, I would qualify that as similar in terms of platform as what we currently have. And as you can see, they weren't as aggressive. Alternate two is what we're recog, ultimately. Alternate two is what we're rec- ultimately recommending. And that's the, um, you know, the combination of Lu- Lucent, uh, and you see AAMS and Sun Life. And in large part, the difference, the main difference that was touched upon is not only is this one of the best contract arrangements, arrangement with Aurora, which is predominant provider that the staff uses, but it also uses an alternate method of reimbursing the providers. It doesn't just agree to a percent discount, it reimburses a specified amount by procedure code. And that's why you're seeing the reimbursement savings that you're seeing. Meanwhile, the, the third option, um, is another different network arrangement with, uh, it would, it still would have Lucent, but it would be a different provider arrangement. And, um, while it does have some, uh, you'll see it from a pricing standpoint, the, the stop-loss has some advantages. I would say, you know, from the discussions that were had, part of the challenge, in, in the, in the comparison discussions that were had, and this is where Taylor, Jason, Ed, and, uh, Bill could weigh in. But when comparing of the two, Scott Fuller, our lead consultant on the, the, the comparison on this, identified, um, multiple disadvantages. And I, correct me if I'm wrong, but one of the, the biggest ones was just, um, there's some additional comfort with the, the Sun Life contract in terms of not lasering and in terms of just, um, the, the stop-loss as a whole.
And I think it also had something to do with the aggregating specific, but I don't recall what that two hundred thousand dollar aggregating specific, um, off the top of my head, what that means. So lasering means when they pick like this staff member, that staff member the following year, we're not covering them at all, they're all on you. And so that has a big implication on future potential costs.
So there is a, the lasering in the alternative number two.
Correct. So there's definitely an advantage to our district and our employees.
Yeah.
With this other contract that's written versus the Great Midwest plan. So it's a substantial dollar difference, but I want everybody to be clear why we're, why we're doing this. Um, going ahead with this recommendation, I feel like why, because of the way the contract is written.
Yeah. Are these savings numbers based off of what our current year's spending is? Okay.
Yes.
In projecting it forward with.
So we have the potential to save four hundred, four hundred thousand dollars.
Per year.
Per year, yeah.
Yep, or per the cost up to six percent.
Right. No, I understand, yeah.
We're hoping for the optimist. Most recently, our claims have been tracking better.
Yeah.
But that can change.
Yeah. Okay.
I think the last piece, I don't, clearly we want to touch base on that wellness component.
So we were previously, when we were with Humana, when we are with Humana now, we're using their app called Go365. You do your biometric screenings, you have your height, your weight check. They take your blood sample to do that glucose and, um, all the numbers related to your, um, health that way. They do an online sixty-question, how much sleep do you get? How many vegetables do you eat? And then you do different activities and log those activities on this app. It's great in theory, some staff love it, they see the reward. You get a bunch of different Amazon gift cards at the end of the year. Um, but ultimately it's not making the impact we want to see. And we're not seeing the return on the health, health side of it. Meaning employees are not staying aware and taking care of what they need to, to make sure that they're healthy in the long run. So ultimately with Humana moving away, going away, Go365 will no longer be an option for us as it is. Um, and in looking at all of the different client data that USI has and taking employee feedback, we're also recommending moving forward with a preventative-based wellness model. Meaning if you go to your primary care position once a year and you do your preventative screening, so mammograms, colonoscopies, all that fun stuff, if you do that, it's not only going to help you remain eligible for the lowest health insurance premiums offered for your position, but it's also proven that there's that long-term impact on your health and how making sure you stay healthy and catching those screenings early on. Um, because USI speaks to it all the time, we're on calls with them, the sooner we can catch it, specifically cancer, the like, more likely you already survive. Continue to push it off, it's not a win for you, it's not a win for us. And, and your health is important, jobs are important, students are important, but our employees' health is really the most important in all this. So we're moving, remember, making the recommendation move to the preventive screening model. Go to your primary care physician, fill out the paper, no points needed, no apps needed. Turn it in to me, have it in your file, you'll remain eligible for that wellness premium then, for the next, uh, plan year. Thanks. Cool.
Taylor, were you as surprised as we were at USI that we thought the committee members and the staff members liked the Go360, but the feedback seemed very favorable to eliminating and going in this direction?
Al, we have about ten percent that are very engaged. Like I said, they love those Amazon gift cards. It pays for Christmas gifts at the end of the year. Um, but unfortunately we have a larger percent that just struggles to see the value in logging into an app every time they go for a walk or logging in every time they eat an apple, things like that.
Now that might be.
It's their perspective, it's their perspective. They don't see the value, so, but I'm confident staff will see the value in this current screening method going forward with that primary care position, developing that relationship.
And that just makes a premium sheet of it.
If they participate, yes, absolutely. Any other questions? If not, looking for a motion to approve.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, alternate number two represented with Lucent Cypress, AAMS and Sunlight. Presented.
There's a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the health proposal as presented. We'll call vote please.
Mr. Andre?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhard?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mrs. Reckles?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Mr. Forster?
Yes.
And Mr. Barkus?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, for all your hard work, all it's. All right, we have the student representative report. It came just in time.
Um, starting on the bottom left, uh, three Elkhorn girls are advancing to state pretendant. So we just like to congratulate and wish them good luck as they advance.
Yes.
Um, the top right is a little advertisement for the agriculture and FFA students. Uh, they're selling pumpkins that they grew themselves.
Right.
Um, bottom right, Precision Plus held a manufacturing day and invited teachers and students. And that seemed to be a great success for everybody involved. And then at the top right there, uh, there's a Culvers fundraiser night on October eleventh. And all, um, or twenty-five percent of all sales will go, go towards Mr. Wolf and his family. And then before we move on from this slide, uh, we would just like to, as a student body, we would like to extend our condolences to the Wolf family. Uh, Mr. Wolf was an incredible teacher and an incredible person. And we would like to thank all teachers and administrators, who even in their own grief have been extremely accommodating and supportive to all students during the day.
Thank you for standing.
Both from left to right here. On the left, seven, eight students used teamwork to try and build the tallest marshmallow towers. The EMS staff enjoyed their day off by participating in professional learning and togetherness. And the middle school also had a student slash teacher dressed like that.
Um, Jackson Elementary, starting on the left. Uh, kindergartners continue to work on their alphabet. Uh, you can see R is for red, R is in that one. And they've also been talking about the human body senses. And in the bottom right picture, you can see them working out their sense of touch. Um, the top right picture shows fifth graders who celebrated the fifth week of school playing minute-to-win games.
Fourth graders at Westhead also explored their senses last week and how they communicate to their brains by completing different tests. This is B's science class, learn about the structures of our bodies and how they function. And each third grade class created a one-page overbook they enjoyed reading and shared their summaries with all of the crew.
Um, Tibbetts Elementary, kindergartners are working on patterns and sorting skills. And I have pictures on the left. And on the right, see, you got the new book boxes to work on their reading skills. And there is no picture, but Tibbetts is also hosting a trunk-or-treat night on October twentieth.
Option students and families enjoyed a movie night with a tough choice to choose one of three movies. Also enjoyed some popcorn. And Miss, Mr. Wolf's family has requested a memorial fund in his name. Where all proceeds will benefit the Elkhorn All Sports Fisher Club to continue its passion of providing access to opportunities throughout the Elkhorn area school issue.
Um, College and Career Academy, uh, of Precision Plus Manufacturing Day. They, um, they bumped their two five hundred dollar scholarships up to one thousand dollar scholarships as a way to thank Ms. Powell for all the hard work she has done. An amazing thing she has done for Elkhorn students. Um, and on the right there, as a part of Elkhorn Youth Build, students engage in employer business. And in this picture, uh, they visited the R and L Spring Company.
Um, I would mention that those were their two new scholarships for students. And this is Powell's name.
Yeah.
And they were originally going to be five hundred dollars, they, they bumped it to a thousand. Thank you very much.
Awesome. Okay, we have the director's report.
Well, thank you for having us here this evening. I'm Amy G. and Sarah Vash is here also. And, uh, as we are entering the sixth week of the school year, we thought, uh, now would be a really nice opportunity to circle back to, uh, one of the things that we just touched upon lightly at the curriculum retreat. And that was the, uh, school improvement goals, um, for the year. So we're going to share just a little bit about what the elementary, middle, and high schools will be focused on, um, as far as, uh, improvement this year. So the goal of our presentation tonight is to share with you, uh, some of our celebrations from the elementary, middle, and high school levels, as well as overview what those goals for improvement are going to be for this year. Um, as we begin, we also thought it would be interesting to just overview what the leadership structure looks like, uh, because all of our sites have, uh, our teaching faculty very involved in one committee or another in, in steering and guiding this work. So, um, at the elementary level, we have three main committees at each of our buildings. Um, and that would be the school leadership team, uh, which drives our academics and instructional practices. We then have our avid site team, which drives our WICER and avid implementation. And then we have our PBIS committee, which then looks through that lens of behavioral, instructional practices, and the overall school culture. One of the things that's unique at the elementary is I mentioned the elementary admin team because, again, we have three campuses, each with different administrators. But this is how we kind of unite and work together so that we are providing, you know, the same experience across three different locations, um, in the community. All right, so a couple of celebrations to highlight coming out of the elementaries this year. One piece of data that, uh, we are very pleased with, but we are also going to be drilling down further with one of our goals is that ninety-four percent of our elementary students have less than two major behavior incidents. So, uh, just to let you know, like a minor incident might involve, you know, bumping into someone in the hallway, um, perhaps saying unkind words, things like that. Where a major experience, uh, behavior incident would be a little more severe and, um, would result in, in a consequence, of course. So when we say that they have two or less behavior incidents, that means that overall, we have some very well-behaved students at the elementary level. And if they do make a minor mistake with some self-correction, with a discussion, they're back on track again with regards to that. So, so while this is a really wonderful number, it is one of the things we're going to circle back on in just a minute. Um, I've listed on here, uh, Tibbetts Elementary's, uh, Blue Ribbon Honor, which they received last year. But the reason I've noted this and linked this here is in the application process, we had to, uh, go in-depth as to what are our instructional practices across all curricular areas. And the reason we're excited about that is this application could have been filled out on any of our three elementary schools because it's an identical process at all three. Um, and that's something that in doing some research this summer, I didn't always find that when you had multiple elementary schools in a school district. It can be very palmetal as far as what's being utilized in each facility. So, um, in doing the work here, all of our principals feel really proud about what's happening, um, in that document. Um, seventy-two percent of our students met or exceeded their target growth on the math assessment, uh, last year. Um, our students continue to excel in the area of math. And what that means is each child, whether they're a very high ability student, low ability or average child, you know, we can kind of look at that false score and then the math assessment will project, here's what a year's worth of growth will look like, how many of our students met or exceeded that, regardless of what their ability level is coming into the school year.
So to, to give some context to that number, fifty percent is, would be right at that targeted growth. Um, so once you start getting above seventy percent, you're getting into about the ninetieth percentile range. So it's, I just want to give that context that seventy-two percent is actually a, a good number when they will get a norm average.
Thank you, Justin. And then, um, as we discussed earlier in July, our elementary math reading achievement is up an average of two percent last year, uh, when the state average has dropped five percent and they figure that was due to COVID. So while the state average is, is having a downward trend, we're very excited that we continue to project upwards with our reading achievement. Um, just some general information when it comes to our civic plan writing process, our school improvements, um, process, this is what the documentation looks like. And all of our schools across the district use this, this form, this process, and it's based on three major factors. First of all, we do, uh, our data dives beginning in the summer. We're collecting data, our, um, leadership teams then sit with their admin teams and Sarah and I process that information, um, looking at it through a number of lenses. But that, uh, data dive then starts to spark some thoughts as to what, what might we need to address um, at a deeper level at each site. We then refer back to our shared commitments, that being, uh, our emphasis on building relationships, the responsiveness, we provide students what they need at that particular time, be that, um, in the area of academics, behavior, social, emotional things. Um, we then look at RETER, what does that look like for each individual child? Are we giving them instruction that what we call is in their zone of proximal development? It's not too hard, it's not too easy, it's right where they're going to pick that up and learn and move forward. And then we look at relevance, is what we teach relevant to what the students' interests are? Um, you know, does it align with maybe their future career goals, all of those things? So when we write our goals, we're looking at our data. We then pick two of those four shared commitments to emphasize. And then we continue to process through the plan, do, study, and act process, where we'll set those goals, we can, we do our data analysis, plan, start the goal. We study how are things happening? And you'll see that this document forces us to really think deeply as far as, not only do we have a goal, but what strategies and steps are we going to take to achieve that? And we outline each of those, what does the timeline look like for accomplishing that? What evidence are we looking at to ensure that, that it's happening? And then what support is needed? And this is really important for both Sarah, myself, uh, Jason, what support do you need? You know, does that mean time during in-service days? Does that mean we need an additional, um, more PD on this topic? Things like that, what might those resources look like? All right, so although we've linked those plans here, I'm going to just give you that quick, uh, overview. All right. So although we've linked those plans here, I'm going to just give you the quick, uh, overview of those. So our first elementary goal aligns with, um, rigor, one of the four shared commitments. And that is to increase student growth and reading at the elementary level. This looks a little bit algebraic because I have put an X in there. So X% of students in grades one through five will meet or exceed their individual target growth from fall to spring on the MAP reading assessments. And then you'll see we've defined X as far as what makes sense for each building based on their individual building data snapshot. So I, um, in our redefining ready dashboard, we do a composite, which is all three elementary. So these snapshots come off of the composite, but each building also has theirs. So they can sit and look at the composite as well as their building data here when they have the retreats. So one of the things we found that on running records, we're very pleased to see how our students continue to progress. This year here was the year prior to COVID, 1920, it was the spring of COVID there. And you can just see as we continue to get students back on track with their growth here. When we look at their achievement in reading, where we were saying 72% of our students met or exceeded it in math, we're sitting here right now, and I just recalibrated this, at about 67% of our students in the area of reading are meeting or exceeding that, uh, goal. So we have set that at, um, 70% at Jackson, 70% at Tibbetts. Westside may be slightly lower than that, so their goal is set at 67% this year. You'll see that our kindergartners are already far exceeding that. And so that's why this goal is really targeted for our first year fifth grade, um, students this year.
Amy, I question, when you, when you read that chart, is it best to go like diagonally? You know, so that, you know, you look at the kindergarten, you know, kindergarten through one, two, three?
I see what you're saying. Um, I think what,
Yep.
Yeah, you'd have to go that direction.
If you're wanting to look at that cohort and follow them through, how are they doing?
Yeah, I just want to make sure I, that's proper to look at.
That's a, that's a really good question. So yeah, Jason did exactly that. So that this was that class in 2021, here they are here, and here they are here. Yep.
That does give us certain presumption that that cohort stays consistent, which we, we tend to add new kids each year, but we're not a highly transient school this year. But we do add as they come through. But correct. So you can see like this group here in kindergarten, 54%, we're at the grade level norm.
Yeah.
And then 72, 76.
Yeah, because it's a, yeah, it's a little concerning that from last year to this year, we've dropped, um, like in grade five. Um, but that's not the same class.
No, it's not.
So you would look that should run up 3%, yeah.
Okay.
From 45.
Thank you for pointing that out. Yeah, so that is, yeah.
Yep. Right, looking at those different cohorts. I think what's really interesting too, like Fanta, some panel, and when they're looking at that reading readiness, they're looking at what's that grade level, are they at that grade level average? And I know we talked about this in the curriculum instruction retreat, how wildly skewed or inappropriate, I believe, the Wisconsin cut scores are when they're saying you have to be above the 67 percentile on average to be proficient. Um, but this is reflective of a grade level norm, which is around, I believe, that 40th percentile on the board. So what percent of kids do we have that are above that grade level average?
Well, we're on this too, just to, just to go a little bit deeper. The beauty of the Fanta's and Pennell assessment is that that's given one-to-one to a student and the student's reading orally for a good portion of that. So we're able to check their fluency, their ability to accurately decode. And then following that reading, there's a comprehension piece. So all of those have to be at a passing level for them to then advance on to the next level. So that's a really deep snapshot of how a child is doing. It also helps us pick up where there could be an area of concern or where that child may need more assistance in growing as a reader. Um, and of course, the, the MAP assessment is a computerized assessment, but it also gives us another snapshot of what skills are in place for that child, what have you. All right. So then if you consider the plan that we just shared, what are some of those strategies? What action are we taking? So one of the things, uh, we utilize a system at the elementary level called EduClimber, which helps us monitor all of this data, whether it's the MAP assessment, the running records assessment, how students are doing on their site works. Um, those interventions, the information feeds into this. So that when our teachers are meeting in, um, their PLCs, those learning times, working together, that data can be present on the wall and we can look at those cohorts of students. Um, grade level teams are working collaboratively to plan instruction to ensure that all students can access and make progress towards those essential grade level skills and standards. Um, our reading specialists, this is one thing we started last year and we found that there was great power to this. So we have, um, different data discussions, uh, throughout the year, where grade level teams will meet with myself, the building principals, our reading specialists. We have a math interventionist on site, special education teachers. And we take a look especially at our tier three students and tier two students who may be working slightly below or below grade level. And, um, we start working on a plan of intervention, what is that going to look like? What time of the day, um, what might be the best intervention for these students? And typically our tier three students will be then, um, in an intervention, 30 minutes, five days a week, with say a reading specialist, math interventionist. Um, our tier two students, however, continue to work with the classroom teacher. And those are students that just may be slightly behind grade level on a couple of different skills. And we know that if we can close that gap, they're right there than at grade level. Um, we have found it really powerful for our reading specialists to then schedule one-to-one meetings with those teachers where we can pull out those running record assessments or other pieces, other artifacts to say, it looks like this child may have a decoding concern. What might be some things we can do during that 30 minutes within the classroom to address those needs? So that way we can maximize, um, our interventionist, reading specialist expertise. And teachers are much more relaxed when they're just sitting there having a conversation about perhaps six of those students and how they can target that instructional time better. Um, we also know that having students work in small groups when they're right at their instructional level is critical. So we have the guided reading resources, we build that time into our workshop model. And then, um, we have done an intensive book study with a book called Shifting the Balance with all of our K2 teachers. The third through fifth grade for intermediate elementary just launched. And so we will continue our work with, um, the science of reading. And we'll be doing this book study with our third through fifth grade teachers this year as well. All right. Our second goal, when I said we're going to circle back to some of that behavior information, is that, um, we are going to, uh, continue to enhance our supportive services, our PBIS programming, and targeted behavioral interventions to reduce the number of major and minor behavior incidents with growth by 10% this year. So while 94% of our students behaving, you know, of the majority of time while they're in school is wonderful. We want to just drill on that a little bit. And you can see here kind of how that has trended over the last few years with the number of students with two or less behavior infractions. So how are we going to go about doing that? Thanks, Jason. Um, we have been fortunate to receive what is called the ES3 grant. And, uh, so we are working carefully with people from DPI coming into all three elementary sites. We have teams of teachers set up. And while, um, we are working with our special education teachers and special committees here, because this is targeted at, um, addressing the social emotional needs, uh, sensory needs, things like that of, uh, students with IEPs, the information, the, um, professional development we're receiving is good for all students. And so, um, these evidence-based strategies and interventions, again, are being aligned to identified students. But these implementation teams are meeting consistently to review the progress. We're learning different strategies that can be used with all students. And so we're going to continue on this, um, journey this year and then into next year with the, um, ES3 work spreading throughout the district. Um, we are continuing professional development for all school-based providers regarding best practices as we respond to the mental health challenges of our KPI students. Um, ongoing PD provided to all staff for, uh, trauma-informed care, de-escalation strategies and early behavioral interventions. Um, our elementary sites are going to continue to expand their mentoring program to provide positive role models for our ASMR students. And then finally, as part of our PBIS programming, the elementary sites, um, are going to, uh, implement the following elements of restorative practices this year. The first one being proactive circles where, um, classrooms will gather at least weekly to have just different conversations where, uh, all children's voices are heard. Um, as far as just building that sense of, um, community within the classroom, deepening those relationships peer-to-peer with the teacher. And then finally, there's a strategy called fishbowl brainstorming. When we are trying to come up with strategies to address, um, particular behaviors we see in our students, um, this type of brainstorming allows a team of teachers to gather and just kind of fire off ideas, um, for that so that individuals can, can try some different techniques that perhaps they've not thought of yet. So, um, many of our, um, staff just received training in those restorative practices. And those are the two that we're going to launch at the elementary this year. Any questions regarding the elementary goals for this year? I'm going to, I'll tag in my counterpart.
I have a quick question. It's, I think it's more of an Emily question, but it came up. But not 94% of, 94% of elementary students have less than two major incidents.
True.
Two or less. So are we, are we focused on? Cause I know that there's some, some issues in schools where lockdowns, soft lockdowns, those things. And if my math is right, which it may not be, are, are those school-wide issues happening because of 6% of the kids? Does that make sense, my question?
Sure. I see what you're saying. I think it would.
Right, 1% or less, but I think that's part of that ES3 grant.
That is.
To target working on those really high severe behavior.
Okay. Are those numbers different since case, this, this game there?
Um, I think it's too soon to, to say, just because it's.
Last year, those was a 94?
I think last year's was 91 or something.
Yeah. So actually decreasing. The, the.
Yeah, the incidents are decreasing.
The number of students involved in those, it's decreasing. So.
And that would be the number that.
Right.
Yeah.
Higher than the number of others.
Yeah.
I would, you know, if, if you're asking me to define, um, in this 6%, um, many of those students may have an IEP, but not all do.
Yep.
So it's fair to say that not all of them do have an IEP. The, the beauty of the ES3 is that while that, um, may address and that funding is related to students with an IEP, the strategy, skills, techniques we're learning through that will be good for all students.
Sure.
Yeah.
Sure. Cool. Thank you.
Yes, it's a great question. Uh, usually I stand, but I'm going to blow a shoe here in a minute.
Oh.
And they're my like favorite shoe, so. Um, so, yeah, which is going to be really hard for me, so I'm going to hit this somewhere. All right. Um, so, uh, starting off with talking about the high school, um, and the leadership structure at the high school. Every August, um, our school leadership team gets together. Um, and we figure out what our school goals are going to be, um, for that upcoming school year. School leadership team is comprised of these three major committees that meet monthly throughout the school year. Um, it ends up being about 30-some people or almost half the staff that ends up being on the school leadership team. So we have lots of input, um, not just teachers, but also, um, student services as well, um, that are, um, that are looking at this data and making these decisions. So just kind of wanted to share that piece with you. Um, so as we're looking at our redefining ready data, um, student survey data, um, B and F data, um, like a page full of data that we're digging into. Um, we were able to identify some celebrations as a school leadership team for this year. Um, our first one is that student services conducted their first needs assessment. Um, this was a survey that went out to all of our students at the high school. Um, asked students for things like, do they have, need study skills? Do they have anxiety, um, needs, grief or loss type of needs? Um, do they need some assistance with planning for, um, after high school? Um, do they have academic needs, like in specific courses? Do they have some needs on or specific areas? Um, do they have a trusted adult in the building? Those are the types of questions that are in the student survey. And then we dug into that data and like identified specific kids and put them into small groups or, um, met with them individually to try to help with what they identified as their need. Um, so this is a huge undertaking for student services, but a real, uh, school-wide initiative. Um, our industry-based certifications were up from, all right, I got my data here because there's no way I was going to memorize all this. Our industry-based certifications were up from 324 last year, um, to 373. Um, our achievement for our students with special needs, um, on the ACT specifically, we went from, uh, 29% of our students with special needs having a ACT score of 16 or higher. Um, and we had that increased to 52%. Um, that's a goal for us with our students with special needs because that allows them to, um, uh, be able to qualify for, um, the, um, gateway promise. Um, and we don't want to, um, have that opportunity taken from them. So, um, that's a really big jump, 23%. Um, our attendance rate of students from low-income families. Now, the way that we have this worded on here might, yes. Might seem like this.
But I'm like.
Yes. So the, the rate, um, that you're looking at, when you're looking at attendance rate, you want students to have a 90% attendance rate or higher. Um, so 71% of our students of poverty, um, had a lower than the 90% kind of threshold. And we were able to increase that to 82%. So it's actually good because now 82, yeah, all right, we get it. Okay. Um, anyway, and then this is a really big, um, achievement as well. 91% of our Hispanic or Latino students, um, have a C or higher at Algebra II, which is an indicator, um, of college readiness. Um, but just remember that piece when I tell you what one of our goals is next. So it will be, anyway. All right. So, um, when we dug into the data after looking at the celebrations, uh, what we identified were three major focus areas where our biggest gaps really were at, um, to set our, our school goals. Now, what you'll notice here is that these goals are actually the same goals from last year, but the percentage has changed. These are really robust goals. Um, humans are complex, to say the very, very least. And to be able to get these gaps to be able to be closed in one year, it takes more time to establish the systems, um, in place and the practices that need to be in place. Um, so we really kind of set a goal of three years, but constantly kind of go back to it and refine it and see if it still is our biggest kind of gap area, if that makes sense. Um, so our achievement of our students with disabilities, uh, was one of our, our biggest gap areas. We're really trying to get to that, some of these, 70% of students will have that 16 or higher. Um, our goals for this year are 55%. You can see last year we were at 40, our goal was 45. So, um, you can see as we're progressing toward that. Um, our attendance rate of students from low-income families, um, we're continuing to try to bump that up to the 90% of students from low-income families. We look at attendance rate because, well, you need to be in school to be able to get the skills, right? So when you're not there, you're not getting those skills. And so that's why that's an important data marker. Um, and then we have a pretty big gap of our, um, Hispanic, Latino students, um, having a GPA of 2.8 or higher. Now they're excelling in math, kudos to our math department. But overall, um, we have very low data in comparison, especially to our larger population of our white students. Um, so that's an area that we need to continue to work on. So, um, as a team, we talked about what are those things that we already have in place that we know that are working, that we need to just continue to get good at? Those are those non-negotiables that we're going to keep doing. And then what's of course, do, does the team feel like we need to continue to get better? Um, so that's kind of what I have up here in this T-chart. Um, non-negotiables that we decided on, we're going to continue to do our guaranteed recovery system that's going back and re-teaching. Um, non-negotiables that we decided on, we're gonna continue to do our guaranteed recovery system that's going back and reteaching on the essential skills. Making sure that all kids are at grade level. Um. At least a half an hour per week, um, being dedicated to carving out that time. Continuing to have high-performing student relationships. Um, especially the care and the press, but especially the press piece, we have to have high expectations for all kids. Um, and so really continuing to work on that. And then, um, continuing to hone and refine our co-plan, co-serv process. Um, which we talked about at the, um, retreat. So the supports that were asked for, when we looked at the data of our Hispanic Latino students, a third of the students are EL students. Um, who have that decreased two-point-eight GPA. Another third are students who are also um students of poverty, and another third are chronically absent. So some of these goals are gonna kind of overlap and helping out um different students, but. On the team said, we really need some professional development and structurally for how do we help? Our EL students specifically in the classroom and how do we support them? So, uh, we've been working with Sarah Thaith right now, um, our EL teacher at the high school, and she's been providing uh professional development since August. Um, for our teachers and strategies that they can use in the classroom. Um, restorative practices continues to support um having high-performing student relationships with students. Um, the restorative practices piece that we're working on um is really how to rebuild that relationship also after it's been damaged. Uh, and then we're gonna continue our supports with um UDL. UDL stands for Universal Design for Learning, and that's um looking at your lesson plans and providing choice in inviting students to learn. Uh, providing choice in how students learn and then providing choi- choice in how students show their learning. Um, our attendance roadmap work and support, that's gonna be work with Kendra Kennedy, and that's district-wide work um for our chronic absenteeism that will be taking place. Um, and then they said AI professional development. Um, we know that that is something that um is coming at us, and how do we? Um. How do we change the way that we teach students because uh we know that AI exists? How do we bump up the rigor for students because they have that support? And how do we use AI to be more effective and efficient in our own practices? Um, as well, because there's lots of great things that it can do for us. So, how do we get everybody then rolling in the same direction? Um, that's that PDSA process that Amy was talking about, all teachers are asked to set goals. Um, by law, they have to um set a student learning outcome, and they also have to set a professional practice goal each year. And so we set at the high school our student learning outcomes uh that have to align to redefining ready metrics. And then those professional practice goals align to those support areas or those non-negotiables that they're trying to work on in their own practices. You can read through those. Um, so moving on to the middle school. Um, middle school uh leadership team is structured similarly, but not exactly the same. They meet also in August every year. To dig into all of the data and to make decisions on what the school goals will be. Um, that's comprised of team leaders, the avid site team, and then I have an ad hoc committee here. Um, it changes, it depends on what we're working on. Currently, our ad hoc committee at the middle school is a UDL committee that helps to plan the professional development around UDL. Um, so it just depends on in and out, what's, what we're working on. Um, but this uh group altogether is about twenty-ish or so teachers of the staff. So again, a vast majority of, of the staff working together to set these goals and decide what, what supports are needed. Uh, celebrations at the middle school. Um, when we dug into the data, there were some, there were some great um celebrations. We're down twenty-four percent in our office discipline referrals, we were at uh, I think eight-hundred, eight-hundred-and-three discipline referrals, down to six-hundred-and-six. Um, so that's really great uh testament to the work that we're doing, especially with building relationships. Um, our co-curricular participation by eighth grade is up to ninety-one percent. Um, COVID, we really hit a decline at the middle school with co-curricular participation, which makes sense, you know, the kids can't drive at that age, so. Uh, we were down to like fifty-three percent um in, in sixth grade, so um we're really, really excited to see that number back up. Our chronic absenteeism, we had a list of about around fifty to sixty kids that we ended up cutting in half. Um, as far as our product absenteeism went. Uh, kudos to Emily Lyndon, the work that she had done. Um, we, we decided as a team that no waitlist for our therapeutic services for our students was a huge celebration. Um, there, and then. Um, six out of our nine areas are, we saw an increase from last year in uh MAP growth goals. So here's what I mean by that. There's three different tests on MAP, there's language, reading, and math, and there's three different grade levels, so that's nine areas to measure for growth. Um, six out of those nine areas saw an increase from last year, which is even higher from four, which is what it was at last year, so, anyway.
Do you wanna speak to the goal of our, maybe our chat some?
Oh, yes, this is a, a really um huge accomplishment for the middle school. Um, we received a bold recognition from the RTI Center of Wisconsin for our multi-level systems of support, the triangle that we're talking about. Um. In uh academics and in behavior, um, so in math reading and then behaviors, all three areas, which not everybody gets all three areas, so we're bold, so it's exciting. Alright, um, when we dug into all of the data, the um goals and focus areas that really kind of have emerged um over the last three years now. Our, um, getting our students to grade-level proficiency in reading, and you can see the growth here over time and what we're trying to work toward. Um. Our MAP uh growth goals, uh, we really wanna get to that seventieth, actually, percentile, so we're at the ninetieth uh percentile, top ten percent. Um, that's really what we're looking for here. Um, so fifty percent of our students meeting their growth goals, um, this year is our goal. And then, um, eighty-five percent of students having one trusted adult. Just some background on that. Um, in eighteen-nineteen school year, fifty-two percent of our students at the middle school were at grade-level reading proficient. So to be able to see that type of growth. Is great. And then, um, in the eighteen-nineteen school year, also fifty percent of our students reporting having one trusted adult. So lots of work that has been gone, very intentional work there.
So where, where were we at last year with those goals? Percent wise?
Then twenty-two, twenty-three?
Yeah.
Yeah, like which goals did we meet and which ones did we not? Is that what you're saying? Yeah. Yep, we met the growth in all of those areas. Yep, we're actually exceeding um in students' uh social, emotional needs. Um, but we're right on target with the MAP growth, and we're right on target with the grade or um proficiency in reading.
Sorry, up seventy-two percent?
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep. Alright, so what the team decided, pretty much the same as the high school. Um, continue with our high-performing student relationships. Um, continue utilizing win for our essential skills and our reteaching, co-plan, co-serv, one thing that is different here. Um, continue to use our critical reading strategies. Um, we're really focused on comprehension at the secondary level and using pre, during, and post-reading strategies to really boost that comprehension. Um, that's one of the things that we've attributed to that um bump up in, in reading comprehension as well. We have to spread this out because we only have fifty minutes of English at the, at the middle school level. So we have to rely on our social studies teachers, our science teachers. Um, and other teachers, allied arts teachers, to help with reading comprehension as well. Um, and then flexible grouping, uh, really meeting students where they're at and growing them from there. So the supports that the team identified, um, they want some specialized um support with identifying key ideas. And supporting details, that's an area specifically comprehension skill. Um, that we need to grow in our students more, and we need to do that work mainly with our social studies teachers and with our science teachers. They're not trained reading teachers, so we have to help to build that skill area there. Um, rigor professional development. Um, Amy was talking about meeting students in their zone of proximal development. When we took a look at the forward test, when we're talking about MAP testing, we need to hit kids in that ZPD. We also need to make sure um that we're giving them opportunities to think at higher levels. And so how do we embed that into what it is that we're doing um in class? And how are we assessing them with that and providing them those opportunities to think at those higher levels? Um, then restorative practices there, UDL, attendance for that, and AI professional development, same. Getting everybody rowing in the same boat, um, we have goals around. Um, all of this, uh, teachers identify action steps in their practices. Um, that they will um implement in to hit each of these goal areas at the middle school.
Questions, that's a lot of information.
It is. Try to be fast.
And that is a process they go through at the beginning of each school year, and it does go all the way down to. Those building goals, then the teachers have their individual goals that all do that.
Thank you for the report and the time. Okay, third Friday enrollment report.
Yeah, lots of numbers here.
More numbers.
Yeah. But as you know, we, we do two official counts each year, third Friday in September, second Friday in January. Both are important for a number of reasons, the, the September one. Um, is used for calculating our final revenue cap for the year, and it's also used for state aid purposes, so. Um, and then Jason jumped to the history, there's a kind of see, these numbers represent headcount. So it's the number of students, residents attending our district along with helping enrollment in. Overall, um, we are down about eighty-five students in terms of headcount. Uh, resident enrollment's down about ninety-five, and open enrollment's up about ten, so that's how kind of nets out to that eighty-five, so. Um. Those are the numbers, um, again, we'll do this in January, but it's, it's one of the pieces of data we need to finalize the budget, so. That's our official numbers.
So is there a, when we do have a declining enrollment, is there, there, there's something in the state budget that helps? With that, I can't remember.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, speak to it, it's. Yeah, you speak to it.
Yeah, when we go through the budget somewhere, I'll talk about that, you're absolutely right, Julie, there, there's, they call it a whole R-bus, so.
Yeah.
It gives us kind of a one-year reprieve.
Yeah, a one year, okay. Yep. Okay.
Yeah, not, you know, with the housing in the city, just not having open houses, it's disappointing to lose ninety-five resident.
Yeah.
Students in one year, that's a big.
Yeah.
Drop.
Yeah, I talked to a couple of the area school districts, at least like L H D and such, and they're seeing a similar pattern, and it's the resident number going down.
It's just big classes graduating in a small town here. Part of it.
Part of it, sure.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're also seeing Williams Bay seeing the same thing where their. Houses that are getting purchased in this area are getting purchased by more senior. Couples from the south that don't necessarily bring in.
Correct.
Kids and families, yeah. If so, they wanna be in this region in this area.
Um, are we, is our open enrollment out? Has that increased or?
It's about the same.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright. So it's not from open enrollment? It's not from kids opening enrollment elsewhere?
Correct. Yeah.
Alright.
Yeah, we were, we gained ten more on the open enrollment.
That was the net.
Yeah.
And then.
Yeah, yeah.
And usually throughout the year, we continue to. Pick up on that, but we're to the point where we're graduating. I mean, we're, we're, we need about a hundred and twenty-five annually just to.
Yeah.
Your place, yeah. To get the right key points.
Yeah. Alright, you wanna give us the?
Yeah, a couple of highlights, uh, it's a summary page, there isn't a lot of new information here, I just, I updated the enrollment piece on this page, so I think that's about midway through here. Um, where I just put in the enrollment figures. And then I think that the second page, I don't think there's really any changes in terms of the summary. Um. Then I think if you go to the next page, Jason, you can kind of scroll almost. All the way down. Um, what we do know is that, um, obviously the, the enrollment piece will, will be down slightly. Um, what that does, this is that revenue cap calculation sheet, so as, as you mentioned, Julie, that, that whole harmless number. Um, is that seven-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand. This is what gets kind of added back in, cause it goes back to the previous year, three-year average to calculate our revenue cap, so it gives us that one-year reprieve, so to speak, so. Um, to the, you make it a little smaller, Jason, to the, to the right. Um, the revenue cap calculation, which is in blue, that thirty-three million, one-eighteen, that's about within fifteen thousand of what we estimated. So it's pretty, pretty darn close of what we thought overall.
Yeah.
The two numbers we're waiting for is our state aids, which. By statute was supposed to have the fifteenth, which I think is on the weekend, so we may get that on Friday. And then the other one is the Wisconsin uh Parent Choice Program or the voucher school program. So last year, it was about three-hundred-and-eight-thousand that we're, we can add to our revenue cap, which becomes part of our tax levy. So the local citizens pay for that, and then it's an expense on our book, so we don't get any more or less money, but it gets added to our tax levy. That number, assuming we have the same number of students, which we won't know till the fifteenth, is going up about thirty-five percent. Because that was part of the state budget. So they increase those voucher amounts, so that number of three oh eight's likely to be in the four-hundred-thousand, assuming the same number.
So the taxpayers are paying for.
Correct.
Students who are enrolling in.
Exactly.
Private school.
That's the system. Yep. Yep, so. And then the last page, I think, on this document is our property value sheet, um, and that's going up over sixteen percent. We've already received that from the Department of Revenue, so that's a huge increase. Um, statewide average was around thirteen percent. So, um, what that will do is it'll lower our tax rate. Tax rate, it doesn't mean it'll lower our taxes, it'll lower our tax rate. Um, cause most of this increase, when I looked at the details, about one and a half percent was like new construction, the rest of it is just market appreciation probably. So. So once we get that, the rest of the data on Friday or, or next Monday, then for the next board meeting, the board will be asked to consider adopting the final budget.
Thank you for that information.
Yeah.
Alright, update from the Financial Stability Committee.
We had an illness of a very key individual on that committee, and um so we postponed that meeting to next Monday. So. Um, no update.
Okay.
From that committee, but I wanted to. Yeah, share, yeah, just that.
So when is it meeting next?
Next Monday.
Next Monday, okay.
And so it's a rocket, alright? I saw it.
Alright, school board vacancy next.
Alright, so the school board vacancy um closed on Friday, we got thirteen applicants. Um, when we, uh, but, which is similar to last time when.
Yeah.
Um, we filled that position, well, we found when we went to do the interviews, about half.
Drop down.
Drop when they found. I don't know if that will happen this time or not, but we did budget twenty minutes per interview last time. So our next step is we need to select a date. For those interviews, and then Jody can begin calling and setting up the interview type slots. Uh, I was thinking that perhaps uh Wednesday. Early evening, starting at five o'clock, are you saying this Wednesday? Not saying this Wednesday.
Just a Wednesday.
Yeah, perhaps, I think that'd be too tight of a term on this Wednesday.
Right. Hold on, cause we have to notify.
We have until November, yeah, it's a fun.
And we have to notify people when.
Yeah.
The interviewings. Um.
But we could do, that's just, I was throwing that out there.
Questions that we used last time, or is there opportunity to?
You can change the questions. Is there any reason why you chose Wednesday specifically, or like I?
Cause I have practices on Tuesdays. And Mondays are gone because of the ad hoc committee board meetings.
Okay.
Um, but no, that's, we can pick any other.
Okay.
Day we can do, I don't wanna. But maybe that. So maybe that's best, but. We can do a doodle and get some dates. Are there particular dates or like, yeah, this day of the week is really awful.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah.
Twenty-third and twenty-fourth are absolutely terrible, I will be here.
The twenty-third and twenty-fourth.
Yes. Uh, and by extension, the twentieth as well, because I'll be leaving that day.
So the twentieth through the twenty-fourth. Okay, anyone else where really?
Um, I cannot on the twenty-sixth at all. If we're looking that far out.
Yeah, I've got the twenty-fifth. That'd be fun, people can show up in Coslin.
So it sounds like the twentieth through the twenty-sixth, no go.
So the ad hoc committee meeting will be meeting on the sixteenth and the thirtieth?
Yep.
Okay.
Now, yeah, and there's two board members on that, so we don't want to do that on Monday night.
When do we have to have it done by?
The first board meeting in November.
Which is?
Thirteen, thirteenth, yeah.
So we could go into November, that first.
Alright, you still have practices on Tuesday and Thursdays in November? Okay.
What is, one of those, Jason?
In two weeks, thank God.
One, two, twenty-six, we said, and those don't, those not good, right? Wednesday's no good for you? Uh, Tuesday's and Wednesday's are
But I can go, I can miss a practice.
Thursday, Thursday, November second. Yeah, you. I'll I'll make adjustments on my my Wednesday. November first? What about the eighteenth, October?
Oh, you're going through the eighth? Shoot.
On the eighth of November.
Or nineteen?
And what about the eighteenth of October? Nineteenth would look great, but I don't think, I think somebody said they couldn't do that.
Cannot do the nineteenth.
Yeah, I think somebody said nineteenth.
I can, I can do the eighteenth.
Eighteenth, I can, I can make that work.
Eighteenth it is not.
Bonnie, get a babysitter for the eighteenth. That I was, we could have in advance of this request. So October eighteenth of the week from Wednesday.
Correct.
That should give enough time for everyone.
Yeah.
Start at five o'clock. If all thirteen, and by policy, if they want to interview, we interview all candidates. Because we looked at that, is it something to look at the applications and then narrow that down, but it's like, which that may be something you want to look at hypothetically, what if you had a hundred athletes? That's for something, but um by policy, that's the way it's set up, so if we had
thirteen, that's
it could be up to ten o'clock.
Starting at five P M?
Yeah.
My guess is some of them will drop out, but.
Do, would it? Gives us the next hour, so we're not here till ten.
I can start at four.
I can start at four.
I can make arrangements to start at four.
Okay. That way, I mean, at the latest, we're looking at nine o'clock then, I mean.
Yeah, I'm, I'll find out that.
Alright, four o'clock start time on October tenth, eighteenth, okay.
Okay.
Alright, and then Julie, I'll work with you on the questions and we can always, somehow, it is very limited. I think we had six questions.
Right.
Because that's still tight in a twenty-minute interview. If you're budgeting three minutes per question.
Yeah.
Do we share who who has submitted?
Yeah, we'll have a packet on the night of, um, just because in case people choose to withdraw or draw.
Um. Last time, we had no opportunity for follow-up questions or any kind of discussion.
So we'll have, and we reviewed that and looked at that with legal as well, so there will be an opportunity to have that
There will.
discussion. We'll put that on the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright. Yeah, so you can plan on that agenda being not dissimilar from any other position, except that it is an open public meeting for the interview. Can be wonky where the other interview candidates can sit in on the
Right.
prior interviews. Uh, but then after the interviews have taken place, we'll have a recess to close session, discuss the candidates as the board.
Okay.
And then um make a decision, come out to hoping and announce what the decision is.
Okay, good.
Alright. Um, I think that's what I needed for that. Any other questions related to next steps? Alright, that worked better than trying to give a doodle.
Yeah. Alright, personnel.
Alright, personnel, we have another number, handful of items on the personnel sheet. Um, Anthony Savery um instituted his letter of resignation with his last day being October fifteenth. And I want to thank him for his years of service. Um, I mean, Anthony came. Uh, he was hired in my first year as a manager, so I appreciate having the chance to work with him over the past decade. Uh, Mark Lewandowski resigned as a high school wrestling assistant coach. Oh, yeah, the appointment on Nick Dacca is a buildings and grounds supervisor. He'll be replacing Eli Temish. Judy Mallard, a district accountant, will replace Chrissy Simmons. And Michelle Hasek is a teaching assistant. She'll replace Jessica Bar, uh, Babra. And the transfer Jessica Babra to a Jackson specialty teaching system.
Can you share some information about Nick?
About Nick?
Yeah, like his experience and
Uh, Nick is currently the director of buildings and or director of buildings and grounds for the Cambridge School District.
Okay.
Uh, he lives in Elkhorn up by Tivett's School District area. He um, prior to that, he spent twenty years in um the construction industry, working as um maintenance and repairs, coordinating, directing for um three hundred departments, um basically being that individual. And then he went to New Berlin as a, no, he was at Norris. Norris is the director of
Facilities.
facilities there, uh, which is a it's actually a public school, a really unique public school. It's a magnet program for high behavior needs, and so they have residents show there as well as a school. Then he went to New Berlin as a custodian and a head custodian and
You started off as a head custodian at elementary level and then moved into that custodian at Berlin West.
So he had a strong background in a lot of
Yeah.
related areas and and fields, um, strong administrative skills and have very good references.
Good.
And we like that he's local
Yes.
here and you might know, what's Michelle's maiden name?
Agno.
Yeah, Michelle was just inducted into the Booster Club Hall of Fame this year.
Oh, okay. So strong ties for the community, awesome. Great, thanks. Any questions, any other questions that should go in? Alright, we need a motion to approve.
I move to approve the personal recommendation sheet for October ninth, twenty twenty-three, including new employment contrast, condition upon passing the background check, and district mandated drug screening as presented.
There's a second?
Second.
So I moved and seconded to approve the personal recommendation sheet for October ninth, twenty twenty-three, including new employment contracts, condition upon passing the background check, and district mandated drug screening as presented. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and a host?
I would, I would add that we were I would say very pleasantly surprised at how strong and deep the applicant pool was for that
Okay.
position, especially the the timing of the year. We have a lot of fantastic applicants and candidates here locally as well.
Great.
Um, that we looked at, so I want to thank all of them for putting in for consideration.
Alright, school gifts.
Oh, you have, I have two school gifts to present this evening, or one school gift, I apologize. Um, this was a very big school gift. If you haven't been over to the high school, Phil, yeah, Bob Swaddick from RC Welding donated the legacy arch for the track and football field um that will honor initially Coach Paul D. and Coach Dean Wilson on those valued at nine thousand dollars and over the years, additional, the plans have additional records added to that.
Yeah. Alright, we need a motion to approve or accept, excuse me.
I move to accept the generous school gift as presented.
Second?
Second.
Great. It's been moved and seconded to accept the generous school gifts as presented, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Host?
That's really good because that would have been a shame to take.
Yeah, no, I don't want.
Alright, um, announcements.
Alright, announcements, I want to, we want to recognize the uh on behalf of the Elkhorn area school district staff, the school board, last week was school board appreciation week. And um we got a gift for each of the board members there, some Elkhorn spirit wear, so you can sport purple when you have a chance. The dream of mine on a board meeting night, that everybody in purple one night. But um, and then, and all seriously, I did want to, I shared in the board announcements that um, it was a hard week last week.
Yeah.
Um, it was very sad that we lost uh Mr. Wolf. And I appreciate the student representatives sharing that that tribute and acknowledgement as well, but our hearts go out to the Wolf family. Um, he was, um, by all accounts, an incredible individual that um, went above and beyond in many areas. The high school actually created an award for staff members who put others before themselves, called the Wolfie Award, um, and in his name, which they had done several years ago because he had, you know, loved teaching PE, but he went into the tech ed area. He also happened to have that dual certification and and has stepped up several times over the years and and taken on those type classes uh, when needed. And uh, I would say something that was neat for me, um, just seeing all the other ties and and talking with individuals and staff members that, like, I didn't know he wasn't have a beekeeper, but also taught to man several people that he had taught and brought along in that I don't know if you call it a hobby or or farming or
Yeah.
you know, process, so um his, uh, a link to his obituary is there. There will be a visitation this Saturday from twelve, um, from noon to two o'clock at the agility center. And then at two o'clock, there will be um remembrance services in the high school gym. And we coordinate with the family on that and the requests and, um, yeah, so that's all I have to read out.
There is also a um five K run that is being organized in his name in honor. Um, that will be on Saturday, November eighteenth. And um more information will be coming out in the website and all of that, um, probably late this week, but yeah.
I think somebody named Shay is organizing that.
Yes, well, she's, yeah, she's part of the team.
Part of her team.
Yep. Yep, and it'll be a run walk, so if some, if people want to walk it, they can do that as well.
Thanks for looking at me when you said that.
This girl is not running.
And then we do have a quick closed session.
Yep. So we just need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn and contemplate a closed session for instance, Kansas State Statute nineteen eighty-five, parent one, parent state, to discuss resignation of an administrator and discuss a salary reconsideration request of another administrator. The school board will not reconvene in open session for acting as appropriate in order to adjourn.
Not reconvene or it's, if it does say will reconvene?
Does.
But do we need to reconvene?
Sure.
Um.
Will reconvene, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so we will reconvene, okay. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn to contemplate a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen point eight five one C to discuss the resignation of an administrator and to discuss a salary reconsideration request of another administrator. The school board will reconvene in open session for action as appropriate and or to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. I think we need to do a
Oh, do we have to do a voice?
closed session.
Okay, alright.
Yes.
Mr. Gayhard?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Mrs. Zinger-Sol?
Yes.
Mrs. Reckles?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Barkus? And Mr. Forster?